To our work session, the mayor and council of the town of Berlin. It is Monday, August 26, 2024. Just for everybody watching at home, we do have a work session scheduled for this evening. Pick back up with our regular session at 7:00 PM. So with that, I'm going to take it forward. The reason that we're having, the reason that we're having the work session this evening is to discuss Harren Park and repurposing of parcel 57. The mayor and council voted to go into an extended negotiation period with Palmer and Sandy Gillis, and this evening, we're going to discuss some of the finer points of that potential agreement. So Palmer and Sandy, thank you for joining us.
Good evening. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
I'll play off the score in tonight. Good to see you.
To be introduced, Sandy and Palmer Gillis, we should see you.
Thank you. So agenda item two does have a discussion that references Berlin Properties North. That's because the survey, let's see, it's on page three of the packet. The survey that you see there does include, a survey that was done in 2022?
2006.
2006, thank you. I don't know why I have 2022 on my mind. And that does show a good depiction of the whole site, so that's why it was included in the meeting packet for this evening. And then in 2A, you'll see terms for consensus discussion. So we've outlined some of the terms of potential draft agreement to help us get to a defined contract with Palmer and Sandy Gillis. So I'm happy to take them one by one, or if any of the council have particular questions, before we begin then. Okay, we'll start with price. Price is $1.2 million. I believe council member Horace proposed this at our earlier meeting when we first had that group discussion about price, and I think everybody had agreed with the $1.2 million. And then when we extended the invitation for folks to submit their interest regarding parcel 57, that was the minimum ask that we had asked for. So, any changes on that item? Okay. We have agenda item 2A from numeral two, which is parcel 57, which is approximately nine acres, and you can see that depicted on page three of the survey. Any concerns or changes regarding that? I will say that it's a little bit further down, but I did have a concern with it backing up to the park. And with that, I had asked if Palmer and Sandy would be willing to increase the rear setback for fixed structures so that it doesn't infringe on the feeling of a park. And they had agreed to the increase of a rear setback for parcel 57 to 75 feet for fixed structures.
What's, is that the lockout?
Um, I don't know exactly the placement of that, but I think the rear setback, Rick...
You're bringing it down closer to the building, correct?
No, no, it's an increase in the rear setback. So from the rear lot, going toward Old Ocean City Boulevard, what would the typical setback be, Rick, for a B2?
35 feet. I'm not certain, but I think it's 35 feet.
For a B2 would be somewhere around 35 feet. We had agreed to potentially adding that to 75 feet so that it creates more of a buffer between any development that takes place on 57 and Harren Park. Okay. All right. 2A, roman numeral three, B2 zoning. Reasons that we are suggesting that zoning is because if you go to the zoning map, that's page two of the work session packet, you'll see that, Rick, what did you call it? A small area plan?
Not for a similar lot, no.
No, but you're saying like to keep things consistent in a particular corridor?
Yes.
And the whole corridor there is B2, the shopping district. So that's why the recommendation would be to put B2. Anybody have a different suggestion regarding that?
Well, B2 and B1, which is small mixed-use spaces, right?
Correct.
In a sense.
Do you all want to speak to housing before we get too far? And when we ask if everybody agrees, that includes you all.
This is a challenge, and we've looked at this in every different angle possible. And again, we go back to the major items, how are we going to get it from the Old Ocean City Road back to the park? I know how, I believe I know how to make that happen, but that being said, and having done hundreds of affordable housing projects, you need the whole site for housing. To do this right and to do an affordable housing project, you need the whole site. And obviously, we know there's, it's just not economically feasible. So I'm likely to crown on any type of residential component.
When you say the whole site, you're meaning like...
Nine acres.
You're saying the whole site as, to make it residential, and then it probably precludes you because of some of the requirements on parking and stormwater and things of that nature?
Well, to that point, you need, you need economies of scale, and you can't just do 10 affordable housing projects. And if anybody is familiar with the Delaware apartment housing community development, the TIAN, or the Maryland Housing Community Development, we are, we are an approved contractor for those two states. And I don't know how far I get into the weeds on this, but we started an affordable housing development company in 2008 called Green Street Housing. I am no longer a partner in that, but as that developer, we developed hundreds of affordable housing projects. As a builder, we've built a thousand affordable housing units. You just can't do a half a dozen or a dozen. Nine acres is just not enough. And then you have to clear off the entire site, which we know is probably another million and a half dollars.
And you had mentioned as well, like adding the residential component. I know we had talked about it previously in our small group meetings several years ago about adding housing above, but I think that in those conversations, you said that it created too high of a level for housing.
The limitation you have is if you're utilizing the existing structure, the E-line, when the average grade is 24 foot to the E-line, there's two foot stem on the double Ts, so that leaves 22 foot. So to get to above, if you will, mixing with use, you're talking about several flights of steps to get to that. If you're, and you're only talking about a couple residential units, then you provide an elevator, and it just gets really, it's just uneconomical.
Okay.
It's really a challenge. We've looked at this every direction we've got. And then the other limiting thing is how we're going to, how we're making the road line. That's, I have, I think I have an answer for that, but that's another issue.
Do we have any discussion about that, the housing component? I know it was something that we all had wanted to see, but I don't, hearing what Palmer and Sandy are saying, I don't know if there's a way to overcome that.
I just, but Magic wants, which I wish I had, because I mean, well, you don't want my state to miss housing, but I wanted to see happen, but...
Your question.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. Well, I said, everybody knows housing is what I wanted to see happen. There are fixed uses, what mixed use was acceptable to me, that doesn't look as though it's happening. Short of a magic wand, you know, that's it.
Now, I know, I know in some of the internal meetings, just Mary, Ray, and I, just in discussion, we've been trying to also achieve that housing component, and I think that the, the goal of housing, I don't think is fully lost. We do still have a portion of 410. It depends on the placement of public works and skate park and things like that, but I think there's a way to explore that, some in that area at, at a different time as well.
So your, your issue that you're going to run into there is with having appropriate zoning for public works and for commercial, and then also now the residential. It gets tricky.
Well, the more we do right now, and I'm not kicking away from this because this is happening, whatever you guys have decided is where we're going.
We haven't decided.
But trying to add this later is going to be near impossible.
Yeah.
And that's, I'm not, I'm just stating that. I'm not arguing it. I'm not saying, let's take four steps back and go with what she wants or what she thinks. All I'm stating is the hope, the myth that we can come back to that later, the more that we do there right now with this project and public works and the skate park, it's going to be next to impossible. So not saying that it can't, because you know, all things are possible.
I do have a question for Rick. Rick, what is the height limit code?
40 feet?
45 feet. So even adding on to that roof structure, if you wanted to build a top floor apartment complex, that would be next to impossible.
Well, I don't want to argue against myself, but to be truthful, if you're doing a single story, it would be a 10, maybe 12 more feet. So you'd be 24 plus 12, 36. You would still fall under the 45 foot maximum height, but again, you're, you're so elevated at that point.
All with anything to get to the apartment.
Just to get to the apartment. So just with that.
All right, Rick, sorry.
And I'm glad that Dave's here because I'm not completely clear, but one of the questions asked is what type of zoning will allow a park to be there? Of course, all the residential zoning. And it looked like there's a possibility that if you did a PIP for that area, you could accommodate the wishes and desires of multiple uses. My question for Mr. Gaskell would be, would you be able to include a park in a PIP, which is in Towns Code?
Tell us PIP.
Planned industrial park?
Yeah.
You know, you can keep the consistency of the B2 zoning that you're discussing, but you could give more consideration to what is your transition to either future housing or park? And perhaps it's, if it's, if it's something that fits all, would you all, a little more latitude, perhaps? Confirmation that that PIP would work for the broad scope of what you're considering?
In the future? Oh, oh, all of the pieces.
Is that something you would want to see, Palmer?
I'm not quite sure I understand, are you referring to all the city parcels, all the town parcels? Are you referring to parcel 57? You have the lagoons, which are an impediment itself, and you have a very industrial type operations more contiguous to this, when you have public works and existing automotive shop. And again, I know, I know for a fact, they fire up at 3:00, 2:00 in the morning, all their engines and equipment, and someone's going to get a phone call, not going to be me, it's for you guys. First, no removal when they fire up.
And by the time we have public works there, everybody's starting up and running.
There'll be one great harmony.
It'll be something. So Rick, the PIP, is that, is that something you could look into with Gaskell to see if there's some applicability here that maybe helps us get it where we need it?
Essentially, where you have B2, you could have still have B2, you know, I believe that's the case. It's like a planned unit development.
Would it, so is everybody in agreement with B2 zoning for the site, parcel 57?
I mean, yeah, for B2, I'd like to learn more about the PIP, but it just, it sounds like even if we do PIP, there's not enough room.
Well, I think that the PIP, Rick, my understanding is that it would then look holistically, 57, 191, 410, 52, would all be looked at together?
I believe what you wind up doing, Mr. Gaskell, correct me if I'm wrong, but you basically write the rules for what's happening inside there.
I have to look at it. I'm not familiar with the code section on the PIP.
But the...
That's not a question I can answer right now.
I think, but at a later date, YouTube could probably research that and come back to us, but I think that...
It's like looking at Jay.
I think so, too. But running with the idea of B2 for 57 is okay with the group?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And then, and what we did to get these items here, they're from Sandy and Palmer's original letter that they sent over of all those points. That's kind of what we're working now. So the study period not to exceed 180 days following a fully executed contract. That would include a traffic study, state highway entrance, lender financing easements, et cetera. And then settlement to occur up to 60 days from satisfactory completion of the study period?
Well, I just have a question. It's really a clarification question as far as timing goes. Some of, well, can some of this stuff go on concurrently? Like for whatever we decide to rezone, can that be happening while some of this other stuff is going on? Like it doesn't, it's not necessarily three months for the zoning, not to exceed 180 days for the studies, you know what I'm saying?
Can some of this run concurrent?
Yeah.
I think so. I think some of that can run concurrently.
But everybody doing due diligence, of course, but just so we're not like stuck in scheduling markers.
I, I think that is my understanding, that this can run parallel tracks.
For certain items.
Any other discussion regarding the study period and the settlement period?
I'll just ask Mr. Gillis, from your experience, how long does a traffic study typically take from... Actually, it can be done fairly quickly, two to four weeks. Again, it has to be done while schools are in session, so we don't want to lose that winter break.
Oh, no. Tuesday. Don't tell my client.
And from Towns perspective, is there anything that you need to get that rolling? Oh, yeah. Yeah, a lot of help with, right? Since the commitments. Right. Well, I mean, again, I'm hoping that, I was under the assumption from the last meeting that we all had engaged Becker Morgan for the civil engineering. So one of the first, the first...
For public works?
For public works, yes. So the first question the traffic study is going to ask is, what are the uses and what are the, what are the traffic counts going to be? So we need to, we can guess at the skateboard park because I think for 16,000 square feet, we can guess with the input from the Town and Public Works Department, we can guess at the, the park, and we can guess at our uses. And we'll have a combined two state highway entrances along Old Ocean City Boulevard.
Any other questions?
So who, who is, whom is the, going to be the point people or persons between the Becker Morgan group for the public works building, Coastal Ventures, and the Town to make sure the information is flowing and state highway?
The information regarding inquiries for, like Becker Morgan should go to Mary. Mary can channel those to Becker Morgan.
All right, I'm just playing it out.
Steve, great.
Is that, okay.
In the absence of a plan, Director.
In the absence of a plan, Director, that due to major further assigned by the town administrator.
Okay.
Any other questions before we move forward? All right, on to Steve's highway. Down, owned and maintained right of way to access public works, skate park, and Harren Park. Now, this will not, Steve, I hate to break your heart, especially on live TV, but this will not be your highway nowhere. But it will be taking some of the renderings that we had and kind of putting our hopes and dreams, but it will be some time before those come to fruition. And discussion with Palmer and Sandy to get to where we are this evening, the discussion was a more solid surface road, and correct me if I'm wrong, solid surface roadway from Old Ocean City Boulevard back to Public Works than what the skate park would be. And then from there, it would be using some of the existing road, improving it to like gravel or something like that to get back to Harren Park until we further design the roadway all the way back there. Is that accurate?
Yes. So the two entrances that you mentioned, in best case scenario, where would they be from your perspective? So that's a good question. That's why I'm anxious for the, for the Town to release civil engineering for your all's facilities. The one that we have to construct without the Town is at the railroad tracks. When I met with State Highway two years ago, we would have to construct a state highway entrance, I think you all have this, at the railroad tracks. We would abandon, we would lose two of the entrances. So somewhere in the vicinity of where the existing entrance is now, that's shared with croppers, and there's a lot of question about who has a right of way, who has an easement, who has a pathway, there's a lot of legal issues there. Because if you remember, rains and sand and gravel had access because there, you can't, you have to have road frontage, you have to have access. So in order for rains, gravel to have functions, you would have had, that parcel would have had to have had a right of way. So we're thinking that somewhere in this blend here, that we can make it between your property line of the remaining two parcels, three parcels, and our property line. And I plotted three different, two different schemes, see which one works, but again, I need for civil engineer to be on board.
And it's going to require some discussion with Jimmy. It probably would end up being like Jimmy, Palmer, Mary, and Becker Morgan?
Yes.
To figure out, like where that sneaks around, what buildings are left, and what that kind of looks like.
And I'll, well, I'll be the first responder, be in the situation somewhere, fire company.
Yes, but a little bit further down, because you figure the roadway itself, whatever we try to plan, will be the width of the roadway that we need for sidewalks.
See, I already have, already have a day.
But I mean, a turnaround point and things of that nature, I think.
I think they're all worthwhile.
Steve, are you okay with your highway?
Yeah. All my issue with the highway back then was the width of it, because I went out and walked.
About 100 feet?
Yeah, it was some...
It's 60 feet.
It was the widest road in Townville.
I think it's 60 feet.
Yeah. That was my issue back then.
But it has wider sidewalks.
It's highway.
The typical width of our sidewalks were like four. I think we had expanded those because we were thinking that, not eight, they were, no, they were five and five. They were five and five on each side.
So keep in mind that a two-way travel is 12 for each highway, minimum. So you, for 2A, you would need what Zach is talking about is the sidewalks and whatever utilities might fall under that since we look right away. That's what we don't know.
And with heavier equipment from public works.
Right.
But I understand your highway.
Yeah.
All right, utilities. The developer will access utilities via the existing connection on Old Ocean City Boulevard, and they'll take their utilities back. We'll take our utilities down, whatever roadway is designed, back to public works, and probably cap it from there. Build it to whatever we see the future use maybe be, but then probably cap that all. All right, 15 sewer EDUs will convey with property. Water EDUs and any additional sewer EDUs will be the responsibility of the developer.
And that's the number we all agree to.
All right, shared stormwater management plan for parcel 57, 191, and 410 as it relates to repurposing 57, the new public works facility and skate park. Jack, we put this in there for you.
Thank you.
Thinking that rather than developing two to three separate systems, that we develop the system that works together for the whole area and site, given that we just tried to improve what was happening over on Nelson and Franklin, and hopefully not adding more fuel to that fire. And then increasing the rear setback, as we talked about a moment ago, of parcel 57 to 75 feet for fixed structures. All right. Anything, now that we've reviewed the terms for discussion, anything that stands out that we need to revisit on the Town side or on Gillis' side?
Thank you for covering the highlights, headlines.
Hope so. I used your leg. Sure, we're getting the value of the 15 EDUs.
I'm sorry, off the top of my head, I can't recall what that number is.
About 14,000, right?
No, no, that's together. That's together. Is it, I think Jay's closer, because I want to say it's 17, yeah, I want to say it's 17,000 for an entire water and sewer EDU. And the heavier side of that is the super side.
Yeah, I just happened to ask about, I know the water's not on the water.
We have that number. We just have it.
It's close to the sunrise.
Any other questions? All right, let's move on to the other discussion items. Consult, consult, study, design, and receive approval from the state highway, for the state highway entrance. Palmer, can you elaborate as to if there's any other ask outside of information on the Town side? I know at one point we talked about splitting, I can't recall where we were on this.
There's two, there will be two entrances. One will be shared, and one will be totally ours to fund whatever. That being said, there will be crawl seasons between the properties, so our entrance will be used for you all, and your all's entrance will be used for us, as a lot of crawl seasons do. So, and so we get into the weeds with your civil engineer, it's not hard for me to answer that right now.
Now, regarding the cost of the traffic study, I know that's been something that's been discussed in the past. What are your thoughts, what are the council's thoughts on how to approach that?
I know that we have to fully take care of ours, and I guess we would, you all have to have an entrance.
Right.
And the question then becomes, one path is 100% on parcel 57, which takes away an acre or so, maybe, or more or less. So until, again, when I, when we highlighted the word must, there was a reason why we highlighted that word, because I don't know what the Town is looking for as far as that second entrance, the east, I want to call it the Easterly entrance, the one that looks like it's croppers and the Towns and places. I can't answer, I don't know what the Town would...
What I'm asking is, are you all short, so when we approach the traffic study?
Yes.
And you're asking for information from the Town, does the traffic study evaluate the redevelopment of 57 as well as the changes that are made to public works and skate park?
So again, this is a shared entrance, so we would share that expense, but I don't know where you're going to put it. Until I know where you're going to put it, I don't know how to answer that question. I 100% know that the railroad track entrance is 100% ours, so that's 100% the study, but somewhere in Becker Morgan's proposal, I'm guessing, they have some design criteria to get to the public works facility, but I don't know that.
I don't think the traffic...
Again, the traffic study's a 10 to 20,000 dollar item. I know we're 100% on board with ours, obviously. I don't know, I don't know where you're going to do it, but if you're asking us to take away, again, until you get to the design, I can't answer your question, because right now, one path is, could be 100% on ours. That, that squeezes parking as far as our site design goes. I don't know how to answer that.
No, I think...
I mean, one design is 100% on croppers.
I think you answered my question. You're looking at the 10 to 20,000 dollar expenses of shared expenditure as far as, as it relates to the roadway that gets us to public works and the park.
Yes, because we both have input provided to that.
That's fine. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. That's really what I'm getting at.
So I do have a question regarding that. Right now, we know where we can put a public works building and a skate park on the other parcel.
And access to Harren Park.
Right, so we know that, and the traffic study would take that into account. If we wanted to further develop the Town's parcels down the road, whatever we want to put there, we'd probably have to pay for another traffic study. Would that be correct?
Well, I think, I don't know what you're having in mind, but you're running out of time.
There's still a lot of land there.
Well, you have 4 acres.
Well, Rick says yes, regardless of what it is.
I'm assuming that the yard at the public works and the public works facility and the skate park and the access to Harren Park will be on your, on your parcels. So I'm not sure what you're referring to when you say remaining lands, because there won't be much left.
Actually, I think...
Again, until we get a civil engineer on board for the Town, I can't answer a lot of these questions. I'd love to answer them or blow smoke or whatever, but I don't know the answers until you guys step up with what you're going to do. This is together, we must work together.
And we don't know 100% what we'll end up putting other than a skate park and a public works facility.
But I think to answer your question, I saw Rick shaking his head, yes. If we, if we develop it further, then I think, Rick, your understanding would be that we would then need another traffic study.
Oh, if you change...
And there will be a new project.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. If you change uses...
Later.
Later, and you have to create a traffic...
Yeah.
And it may find, Jay, it may result in a, what's the law call it? Non-issue issue. It's a non-issue issue. I don't know, depend on the use, they may determine that's a non-issue.
That's why Steve's highways, Steve's highways.
Yeah, so there would be a pocket community or something back on the, behind the Legion, you know, that...
He's making that up, Lee, he's listening to you.
Well, there's plenty of...
But that would be, yeah, like something like that, obviously, it would have to... And you could, you have other choices. I mean, you have, I know that the property owner of the, the two-story office building, I just drew a blank on the name, he wants to provide access. There's also the county that has access near the senior centers. So there's a whole bunch of choices, and that whole... So there's a whole bunch of choices and that whole intersection at Rite Aid and the convenience store is very, very challenged. And there needs to be a holistic approach to that intersection. It's horrible.
Especially in the morning with buses.
Yes.
And coffee, everybody wants their coffee.
Right.
Children off to school, lots of coffee.
Yeah.
All right, so is there, I, I think what you're saying is reasonable that the town should bear the expenditure of our share for public works, skate park, and park. I just want, everybody agree with that?
The other side is solely on.
Correct.
Everything that has to deal with that one entrance going to the redevelopment project is on Gilis.
I mean, again, I don't want to negotiate against ourselves, but the traffic study entity will have to look at ours and yours together.
Yeah. We would just have to find some way of valuing the total work and then splitting that up together. But I wanted to make sure that everybody's on the same page, that that would be in some way a shared responsibility. All right. All right, let's see, work together with DBF to draft town own and maintain right-of-way to access public works, skate park, and Heron Park. And the reason that we need to do that is because of Palmer's point. We do need to figure out how that is going to kind of sneak around and get to one ninety-one and four-ten and then back to fifty-two.
So like I said, oh gosh, I don't want to worry the water, I'm going to anyway. So Cropper has that road lane that goes back to the recycling plants, right? I mean, the recycling boxes back there.
Yes.
They use that quite a bit. And then just what, to the left of that, what is the more common access to go back to the. Whose is whose, I guess?
Well, again, as I mentioned earlier.
It's going to take some diligence.
The, the small parcel that the town owns was owned by Raines Santa Grav. So that is a, that's a island, meaning it's, it has no highway access. So it's, it's in a, it's in a pocket. So the only way that that is a legal subdivided lot is it has to, in the state of Maryland, and Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, you have to have access to. What we don't know today is how that access occurs. Is it a right-of-way? Is it an easement? How's that work? Because I think you, I think you all have a legal right to get down that road to get to that Raines gravel property, I think. I don't know that. And to add to that, I think the owners of that property think that there's a right-of-way there. I just don't, there's, I haven't been able to prove it. David Engelhardt, God bless his soul, thought you all had a right-of-way. So I can't answer that.
I think the answer is we need to apply some diligence to that before we draft a roadway and agree to.
Yes.
Which is why.
I do have a question. I do have a question. If you hired Becker Morgan as the civil engineer, trust me, we do work with firms a lot. Why would you hire DBF to start?
We'd already hired them to do like the survey work and all that. So I think they're more up to speed with it.
It's, we'll have to talk to them. This is, this is the sort of thing that I think would reasonably fall within Becker Morgan doing the work anyway, so.
Even though we had hired DBF to already design the roadway. Yeah, I mean, it's, most of that is pretty much done. I would, I would say let's stick with the one that started the work.
It's, unfortunately, when you do that, you're looking at it in, in, in blinders because you're not looking at the whole picture, I don't think. Because again, the road design is based on a traffic study. So the D cell, X cell, sidewalks, the whole thing, it has to be done holistically, not in, not in isolation. So that's why I'm asking that question. Which brings me back to take the input you have from DBF and apply it to the overall design with Becker Morgan. It's my best comment I can make. You can't, can't do it with blinders on.
Even though, even though some work has already been done to design some of that by DBF?
Take, take DBF's input and let's bring it into the, into the mix, stir it into the pig mix.
Okay, those are the points that I really had for our discussion. I don't know if there's anything else, Gaskell, that we're missing because we're going to look to you next to hopefully draft something.
Well, I guess my only comment would be, I understand it. It's good to have a hundred and eighty-day study period, but you know, what it says, traffic study, state highway entrance, lender financing, easements, et cetera. I mean, you'd like to have some certainty in your, in your comment.
I applied to et cetera. So I think if there's anything that you feel is additional, I'll be, let's.
I mean, typically, when we were buying a piece of real estate, I'm going through this in Delaware right now. It's just a study. It's not, there's no specificity as to the different types of items. It's just a blanket study. I mean, the city of Solzra had a two-year study with them. This is just a study. But I mean, I think it would be unreasonable for us to not include some tasks along the way. So those would be the tasks that we identified, I think, in our July sixteenth.
Okay, back to front, including but not limiting.
Right, yeah, that's, that's a reasonable statement.
So then, now walk us through so that everybody's on the same page. We go through the hundred and eighty-day study period. If at the end, did you say, look, we found some things that were not what we thought. There's an exit clause for that, right? Is there an exit for the town side of things or no? I'm asking.
That's, that's to be negotiated.
Okay.
I would see that as a no, and I say that because we already spent tens of thousands of dollars. This is the heavy lifting, both on the town's part and our part. Because again, we have to work together on the public works, skate park, and park. So there will be a tangible reason why, but that's hard work. And the other part here, we haven't even started the clock on the rezoning. I mean, rezoning residential right now, that's usually a sixty to ninety-day process by the time you, depends on the cycle of the advertising, et cetera.
So now my question, and maybe this is to Gaskell, if the one hundred and eighty, so the one hundred and eighty-day study period is for the Gilises to further apply due diligence to the property.
Right.
I assume that in that process, there is a kickout for their side through that due diligence.
There would be.
But if it's run through its cycle and they still want to move forward, there should not be a kickout clause on our side. Is that what I'm hearing?
I think that's.
Is that comments for that type of agreement?
It is because.
I'm just making sure.
When we purchased it, I, we had a study period. I don't recall how long it was, but.
I just want to make sure that everybody is on the same page.
I mean, let's, let's take a hypothetical. Suppose you're nine more months before you hire zoning director, you can't get B two up on the agenda. We already.
That's an issue right now.
That's an issue.
We have a moratorium on rezoning.
Right, so I don't know how that falls into the sequence, but that's, we're all working in good faith at that point. The town, I'm just using a hypothetical and I'm being extreme, to illustrate. So let's say it takes nine months. So you're, we know, and again, anybody can refute this, sixty to nine days go before the planning and zoning commission. And so we're already three months in the process at that point, just for that one pass.
Yeah, that's valid, that's valid point of view. So are, currently, the pause is till middle October with a review.
Yes.
And.
We'll be again, first meeting in September.
Right.
And then you don't want to get in a position where you, you exempt yourselves from rezoning. You don't allow anybody else to do it, so.
And what's the process for rezoning? Is it two public hearings?
Well, it has to go to planning commission first.
Advertise.
It's got to be advertised.
It's one for them and one for us.
Yeah, we get these recommendations from the planning commission and have a hearing here.
Is there any work that has been prepared in advance, so it's ready to go?
Advertising.
You need a planning director.
It's going to take about four months.
You need a professional planning director to do this.
So I mean, the risk that we're running is an evil, the point is, what if it's done on?
Which part?
B two.
Um.
What if it's having?
Can you walk, Gaskell, why don't you walk everybody through the rezoning process?
It has to be either a mistake or change in the neighborhood, in the character of the neighborhood.
And then once it, so it had, it goes before the planning commission. They have the ability to vote favorably or unfavorably.
But their vote is just a recommendation to the mayor and county.
Right, and it comes here.
Comes here.
For.
For more or not?
It obviously wasn't always residential, was it? Only changed residential, make it work. So before it was.
Well, it probably isn't. It could be argued legally that it's a mistake because there's no residential ground.
And because once it was acquired, I think our residential zoning was applied as a, as a part thought without the idea of really thinking about the rezoning of the front parcel.
The good news here is you're not spot zoning. So I mean, everything around it is surrounded by B two. But today's point, it goes, they plan it and zoning turns it down, then it comes, it can be appealed to the town council, which is.
Well, it has to come here regarding.
Well, they don't, they don't have the final say, they just make a recommendation. Right, they can recommend to. Yeah, they just recommend. I mean, not, not, not discredit that.
Yeah, I would not say that they just recommend.
No, I, again, I don't want that to be looked at as a discredit because it's not a discredit, but at the end of the day, the final decision does not land, and that's probably where my word should have happened. Sorry, folks, I've been working since six o'clock. But the final decision does not lay, does not lay in planning and zoning.
We do value our.
We do.
Of course, no, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that we don't. They don't legislate. Right.
So it's highly unlikely that it would be denied because ultimately, his four years has the final say.
Well, I think we would work together with the planning commission to help.
Right.
Understand what the vision is.
I would suggest unless the planning commission came up with something that we have not thought of, that would be a consideration that would change the whole flavor of the conversation.
So it's not spot zoning and it was, it was industrial before, it was residential. So I mean, there's lots of elements to cling to when you're trying to prove a mistake or change the character of the neighborhood.
Would you, speaking of that, would you agree to a deep restriction for the sense of not making it industrial to run in perpetuity with this transaction? Because I think one of the biggest things, and it's not its own industrial, so I don't think that that would really.
I don't, I don't really see why you're asking.
Because I think one of the original reasons, correct me if I'm wrong, folks didn't want to have an industrial, like commissions there, which was one of the leading reasons. Am I correct? Am I correct? I can't speak to that, I wasn't here to purchase, but. So I'm just saying from the heavy industrial side of things.
Well, if you change it to B two, we're not.
I agree.
So why would you?
And if you take a reason, future mayor council will rezon.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
So I can't imagine them going back to M one.
Okay, I was trying, is it, is it something you feel passionately about?
We do, we do need.
B two would do it.
Okay, then drop it. I was just trying to.
We do need to be clear about what the zoning needs to be for the public works, but that's that parcel, so.
I think it says city owns.
Yeah, there's some language regarding.
You got to talk.
Town facilities and use, for public use, I can't think of the exact word.
Municipal electric communication, first through gas, fuel, transportation lines, necessary equipment, buildings incidental there too, virus, transmission. Transformer booster rail realization, water tanks to stay in place.
Sounds like the end of a radio.
By the time you're like, auction, or.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't, I don't, I don't anticipate it being a problem, but I don't think a public works facility fits into a commercial. Yeah, maybe a light industrial or something.
That would be for four-ten, four-one-ninety-one.
Yes, correct.
All right, anything that we maybe have overlooked in the conversation?
I do want to make it know that there are certain things in the grant that prohibit what kind of projects can be there. Just, this is the list that's in the grant agreement. Cotton shops, gun shops, tanning salons, massage parlors, adult video, bookshop, adult entertainment facilities, chat cashing facilities, gambling facilities, tattoo parlors, or liquor stores.
So that, that would have to be put into the contract because I, I, you know. I know you're, I was intending to have the.
First, first you refer to that, but I don't want to joke in this forum, but.
But I'm just thinking, you know, twenty-five years from now, if something changes and one of those stores goes in there, the state can come back to the town and say, give us back our half million dollars, right?
So gosh, that's the, that's the, the net goes back to the original question. What do we not want? The.
All right, so if Gaskell works, put this into contract form. Is there anything before we ask him to start doing his homework that this group feels like it needs offering?
I just need to say, when you talk about the recommendation of the planning commission and the final approval that lays with this council, we can't forget public input into these decisions that's going to be made about, about this project. We just can't forget that. And, and when it comes to the final approval of this, of this deal, don't forget that, that, that will also be, be presented to the public. And we can sit there today and have a consensus, but, but, but public input has, has, has a big impact on the final decision of any contract or, or I must say, deal that this council may, may want to make.
But I, I understand what you're saying and I don't disagree with you, but we're going to need to get the word out to the public before this contract gets executed. Correct, because once that happens, it's too late for what anyone else thinks.
But this would be an action item that would have public comments associated with it. So I think to that point, but I think that we should have a contract that people can read and understand if they're for or against. I think that's reasonable. You agree? You should look at it.
I'll look where you.
Okay, well, anything that we've maybe overlooked, it should be included in the contract.
How much you win? I mean, that's.
One point two.
The question I get is.
Unless you want to do more than one point two.
Sorry.
Unless you want to do more than one point two.
No, 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 I'm, I'm. I, I need input from you guys so I can create this project.
And what I would think is reasonable is, in the process of us drafting a agreement, I think you should probably have something to, what, even if it's a sketch, that could be shown for the public comment of the contract.
I hear what you're saying, the, the, and having been in that process before, I don't like that color brick. And you put, and you put something. You make it, you put it, I don't like the shape of the window. I don't like the color of the wall. I mean, you put all that discretion and the whole project falls apart. And it just, when you get into the weeds that deep, it's really, really, we've had two years of public input.
Can we use what Andrew sent over showing the buildings and apply that to a view of fifty-seven? So people can see, think, Mary, even if this is on our end, I think what we should have is a clear understanding of what fifty-seven is as it relates to the other parcels. And we should also have a clear understanding of the two buildings that are remaining, just so that people can see them.
Where is that?
You may not have this, but actually you should now, was this?
No, this just came over today.
Yeah, this was.
What was it?
Is that what that happened?
Does that have the available square footage of the remaining buildings? That's, too, that's.
I think so. I don't know. Exported for.
Just to be clear, I mean, until we get a contract, we're reluctant to put much more tens of thousands of dollars forward on this. So we're anxious to get a contract, get it started and some, and in that process too, maybe some clarity as to when the rezoning will occur.
I think that's reasonable. And we'll put for the public hearing side of stuff, for the public comment portion of the action item, we'll have included in the package a rendering of what the parcels look like and what that remaining building would look like.
I had a question about the demo part of it. It seems like the site is getting cleaner. It seems like the site is getting cleaner, less technical term. From your perspective, I'm sure you do, and that you've, you've been out there and watching it. Are you content with the process of how things are going there? It seems like right now, there's a lot of, towards the, behind the fence, there's some borders and stuff that they're, those are my removing. But, um, as we stand today, are you content with the process of how it's working as far as your perspective?
I mean, we lost 9,000 square foot of what I would consider to be viable shell that we were planning on using. Keep in mind, and you, and you see in your fit documents, you're cutting off 12 inches below finished grade, average grade. So, you still have massive amounts of concrete underground. So, that you don't sit, but it's not something we haven't worked with before. I mean, I'm not sitting here, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars of more demolition, even with capabilities exactly. Regardless, when you're running water sewer lines and utility lines, you gotta go deeper than 12 inches. And right now, it's kinda cosmetic, just kinda.
I see.
Over top. I mean, again, I go back to the tree stump that we did on West Street. I got one bid for 7,000, one bid for $3,500. Why is the difference? The guys are moving the tree stump totally and the other guys just take the sawmill off. So, kinda that same thought process.
So, you, you'll have, you just said, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars more damage over.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, look at the, the front building. You've got all this mechanical equipment on the roof. You go inside the building, you have lots of piping and stuff on the inside. Then you gotta chemically wash the ceiling to get the, to the structural seal. Hopefully, the structural seal's still good, but if you walk through there like I have in the last week or two, there's still a lot of, a lot of demolition going through there. I mean, even leaving the buildings, not touching the buildings.
Yeah, well, most of us walked through that and saw that. I think, um, we had a question at our last meeting about the shed on that, I guess, door side.
Management of people, management of resources, you all have heavy equipment on the site. Those are toothpicks. And when you take it down, I was, we were planning on using it as a short-term storage. But if you take the shed down, you're taking some toothpicks down, but you're leaving the slab. So, if you're gonna take it down, take the slab out too, please. I mean, it's not, it's not a deal breaker by any stretch, but we're talking about, I mean, if you look at your own specs, saw cut the acrobos. There's a lot of stuff underneath that we've been played to, played at well.
Just, just for a little perspective, though, you've had a $500,000 grant and you took $500,000 worth of demolition.
Yes, we're pretty maybe disappointed that we saw the spreadsheet the last meeting, it's real close.
It's getting there, very close.
There's still some.
But, we're gonna leave the shed because they asked that we leave the shed. That's what we decided.
Well, the management of people, management of resources, if you have a localized site contractor on site with heavy equipment.
Yeah.
Go get those piers, those ported post concrete piers out. I mean, I, I mean, I'm not handy in any way whatsoever, but I can take that shed down.
For sure.
That's, that's the difference of using the big equipment or.
Yes.
Big stuff.
Thank you, Mary.
Right, and that's, and that's, that's, I understand. But the part of the discussion we had before was, well, let's just take it down. But you, but as you had stated, all of the parts, toothpick, big stuff, you're gonna keep it and do it for the moment.
I'll take it down eventually, but.
Right, right, right.
Not today.
It's not, yeah.
I mean, if you all decide to take it down and remove, remove the slab.
Yeah, we're okay with not taking it down.
Just go get those other.
I agree.
Use it for storage. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, no, it's.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
So, yes.
Short answer, yes. Sorry.
We're on, look, we're two of a kind, we, we go all the way around the neighborhood before we answer a question. That's okay, sometimes.
All right, well, any other questions before we get Gaskell Sharpen into the question?
No, I mean, well, this, this is really, this is skate park related, so.
Okay. Mary, anything you see? Jimmy, anything you see? Rick?
I think, I think your entrance is your biggest challenge, get a green light.
What he said.
All right, everybody's content, we'll call it and we'll see everybody at 7. Palmer, Sandy, thank you so much. If anything comes up, pass it along. But, uh, what, what we should do is, oh, let's get an idea of a timeline. So, how long does it take, do you think, to, to put something like this together and?
I'd like to have two weeks, I think.
Okay. So, that puts us, and, and I'd like to make sure that maybe the second meeting in September or the first meeting in October. That way, the public has time to be able to see it, look at it.
And maybe by that point, we'll have a better idea for our moratorium and what we have in planning.
Would you be, would you all be able to make the first meeting in October if we did that?
Unfortunately, we'll be out of town that week. We'll be here before that. And what's this, what's the second meeting on October?
I mean, I think the 23rd or something, I should say, 28, 28 weeks back.
Yes, 28, okay?
Yes.
So, then why don't we plan for the 28th of October? Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Oh, it gives the, I'd like the public data comment to really be able to look at it as well. 28th of October, we'll plan. All right, thank you all, that's the end of our work. We'll see everybody at 7.